Well, the members of the Economic Development Authority. Steve, good to see you here, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jerry. And I'm glad to have all of you here. Thanks for taking time out of your busy schedules to meet with the City Council. And I understand a presentation is, guys, wait, I'm over here, is in order. So, Mr. Robinson, would you like to begin?
This will be very brief. And really quickly, on a personal note.
Would you like to introduce the members of the Authority?
Sure.
As everybody knows, he's here.
Starting from my left is Mr. Tony Sisko, Ursula Rhodes, Michael Lee, Nikita Howkins, Kim Brown, Jim McDonald. And in the back row is Michael Burnett. And I think that's all that joined us tonight.
Great. Well, thank you for coming.
And I want to thank you guys for hosting us for this brief update. We're going to, it is going to be brief. I know you have a heck of an agenda to deal with. On a personal note, I want to say this will be my last time giving one of these updates. My 12 years on the Authority has come to an end. It has been an incredible ride. I've enjoyed it, and I think we've gotten a lot done. I do want to say, I think we have a very, very apt and strong Authority. The mission of the Economic Development Authority has not changed much at all. It's to maximize the utilization of Norfolk real estate, foster business capital investment, increase revenue by growing the tax base, focus on efforts to build on the strengths and needs of the neighborhoods, and support minority and small business. And about a year ago, we decided to include veteran businesses in our mission. We swam businesses prior to that. Primarily, we are in the business of issuance of bonds. We've been a vehicle on several occasions for real estate development. We provide small grants to nonprofits when it's appropriate, and we do our best to support workforce development initiatives. This year, and in some cases, many years, well, for many years, we have supported these different folks here. The Procurement Assistance Center over at ODU, we provide them $75,000 annually. That has been one of the better investments. That, this year alone, they helped Norfolk businesses secure $43 million in federal grants. Each year, we earmark $5,000 to $10,000 for Virginia's for high-speed rail. The newest beneficiary of our efforts has been the Barrett Transitional Home for Women. That's a small home over off of Princess Anne Road. They only ask for a $10,000 one-time stipend, I guess. I just got a message from the young lady that runs the initiative, and they had their first graduate. It's a home for homeless women, gets them off the streets. They try to keep them there a full two years, teach them how to stay off the streets. And they had their first graduate this, just last week. They managed to help her get a job, help her retire all her debt, got her credit up to snuff so that she can rent or buy a home if she chose to. And that was, in two years' time, she went from living on the street, literally, to those circumstances. The Culinary Institute, we've supported for quite a few years. I think it probably averages 25K a year in support. I think we earmark 40K a year for it, but they don't always use it. We have a Small Business Assistance Program to try to introduce new technology to different companies in Norfolk that need either maybe some lean initiative or a website developed, two most common needs. And the office itself, we support at the level of about $400,000 a year. Excuse me, I lose my voice. I do want to say a little, go into detail a little bit about the Procurement Assistance Center. There were a couple of, I asked them for a couple of success stories, and these are the two. They gave me Turner Strategic Technologies, secured 27 million in prime contracts in FY13. And Andre Marquez Architects secured almost half a million in contracts from the federal government. These are usually federal contracts. Say a little bit about the bond activity. A lot of it's been in the healthcare or education, with one manufacturing bond to help power compressor expand considerably. I think they're adding 60 jobs. Mr. Mayor, you made note, I saw you there at kickoff. I rode by the other day, and it looks like they're about ready to start utilizing the building. I want to say something about the fees from bonding activity. That's what gives us the ability to help these nonprofits and to help the office. And we've had a reoccurring problem with Virginia's Small Business Financing Authority undermining the local authorities, not just Norfolk, it's authorities around the state. We had an agreement with the SBFAs that has expired here just a month or so ago. We hope that we can find a way to have that revisited. We hope, I'm personally hoping that the new administration will weigh in at some level on that problem. That is a deal breaker for the Authority's ability to be helpful. And I promised it would be brief, and it was. So, any questions that we can answer?
Any questions? Steve, were you going to make some comments, too?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Robinson? Thank you, Jerry.
My pleasure.
Okay. All right, Steve.
Appreciate it. An opportunity to come here and discuss this with you. Like Jerry, I'll be exceptionally brief as much as I can for obvious reasons. I think you all have a very packed schedule and a need to really get to serious work. This is not serious. I want to start out here. Bruce Katz, you all know him, he's a world-renowned author, he has tremendous following in economic and other types of development aspects. In a nutshell, without reading these quotes verbatim, what he's talking about is that we're existing right now in a very massively changing and dynamic global economy that's incredibly competitive, that requires a tremendous amount of innovation in order to survive and grow. In short, we have to really focus on what creates the greatest wealth generation or prosperity for our citizens. Now, I've been on the ground here for about four and a half months, and I've got to say, aside from the fact it's an incredible place, I spend a lot of my time assessing, discussing with everybody different thoughts and processes. I've got some basic observations. The jobs and investment are absolutely paramount. They're the key contributor to what we're doing. And really, while it may not be something new to a few of you, the reality is, sometimes it gets missed in the equation, I think. And that's what we're trying to look at, is to focus on the whole and to be aggressive and adaptive. Innovation economy, at least in my opinion, is a key talent, absolutely essential, human capital. We have to take a look at quality of life, those amenities, pay attention to those as well, as well as bold partnerships. And I'm a firm believer that local governments must take the lead. I've been through a few of these departments over the years, or a couple of them, I should say. It's been 15 to 20 years, so it's not that narrow of a timeframe. But I believed most definitively that we had to redefine the mission of the Department of Development. I wanted to move from one focus to another, to basically pay attention to the, well, to the creation of jobs and investment, let's just be fair. It rolls back to it and to the creation of opportunities. If you have any questions at any time, feel free, please, because I'm making a lot of statements here that may or may not be in tune. Also looking at adopting internal and external measures as a result of my assessment. I believe that we have to have something that's focused on business attraction, retention, and expansion, or BEAR as the acronym. We have to target our real estate development to ensure that it gets the most and best results. Workforce issues are very important, and entrepreneurial and small businesses are a cornerstone. I've reorganized the department. We've eliminated sectors. What we're looking at now is the utilization of talent and capacity to achieve the best results. It is a continuing, growing, organic process. We have an accountability doctrine in place, along with a pipeline, that helps us keep track of all of our projects. And I am, and have implemented, I should say, new training mechanisms, as well as pursuing, where feasible, new best practices, if you will, concepts and ideas. I encourage people to speak up with respect to that, and it's already beginning to manifest itself in the way we're approaching our companies and our projects. I'm going to walk down through a few of these fairly quickly. BEAR is, of course, attraction, retention, and expansion. We want to target innovation-based companies, but they don't necessarily have to be large. And by innovation-based, I mean those that are fast-growing and most likely to survive in this global economy. We have to pursue opportunities for investment with existing and related companies. And we have to take a look at things like retention and outreach programs. I need to say a couple of comments here. Attraction, pure attractions are rapidly dying off. It's very difficult to get large companies to relocate anymore. It doesn't mean it doesn't happen, but the competition factors are incredibly high. If you've seen the commercials from New York, tax-free for 10 years is pretty attractive if that's your issue. So, we have to focus on our quality of life, the connectivity between our companies, and where the greatest potential for growth might lie, as well as stabilization of the economy. Retention and outreach are probably the most complex, but the most important of all. In the 15 and a half to 20 or so years I've been doing this, and the $4.5 billion worth of investment in which I've worked, probably 2/3 have come from retention and expansion projects. And that can, of course, be from mergers, it can be from acquisitions, it could be a geographic economic development, which is where the CEO relocates, or it can be something as simple as an economic twist that suddenly devastates the company and it gets sold. And it's kind of interesting in that one, but it's very labor-intensive, so we have quite a few people working on that. Targeted and strategic real estate development. I think this is vital to the continuation of the department. You know, aside from putting up and knocking down buildings, redeveloping areas and the like, we're taking a look at, well, really, new tools, new districts, new incentives, if you will. But more importantly, we're trying to create these critical masses where you have continuing growth, where we help to build the neighborhoods, we help to stabilize communities, and we help to ensure that there's the proper growth that the city needs to continue forward. And I think sometimes this requires exceptional circumstances and exceptional investment. And I know we've been engaged in a few of those of late. These are the strategic economic development areas. These are primarily what we're looking at and focusing on, but understand it's not the only ones. There are other areas as well. There's certain components in the center there that, not being ignored, are actually undergoing some development. But this is our base from 1030, or the Project 2030, rather, sorry. Entrepreneurs and small business. I put "small" in quotes because the federal guidelines goes up to 500. And the next graph, you'll see that. This includes a need to develop and pursue programs and enhance and help those companies grow. We want to identify incentives, development zones, mentoring programs, and the like, and we have been doing this on a targeted and project-by-project basis. And internally, we've established a program with dedicated personnel paying attention to the small business. We've also identified and brought on, as part of our reorganization, bringing on, I should say, two business concierge positions, one of which has been filled, the other will be filled shortly. We already have a critical mass of small companies and startups and entrepreneurs. This presents a tremendous opportunity. In terms of all our companies, they represent roughly 60 to 70% of our total operational strength. It's an indication of the concentration of small companies and their distribution in the city. The scatter map shows that they're really all over the place, heavy concentration, of course, in certain areas like the downtown, but it requires us to pay attention to the whole. I wanted to put this up here, the employment by sector, industry sector, I should say. We have healthcare and social assistance is the most prominent of them all. That's actually very important, because that means we have a potential outreach to companies that are in biomedical, related industries. We have educational services, which is a combination of public and private, and it goes on from there. The professional scientific and technical services is very strong for a region of this size, for a city of this size. And that's important for us to continue to grow the knowledge economy and to help these entrepreneurs expand. Path forward. I'm a big fan of something called a comprehensive economic development strategy. It's a SEDS, is the acronym. It derives from the Federal Economic Development Agency guidelines. I like it not only because it will help us get funding for the development of the plan that includes a SWOT analysis, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, but also because after the fact, we can obtain and pursue implementation grants, something which we have not really done as much of as we should. The ultimate goals, again, jobs, investment, diversification of this economy, if you will. I believe that the SEDS program itself allows for a comprehensive and inclusive program. It's not to replace Plan 2030 or the Hampton Roads SEDS, but it's to focus strictly on the city and upon the growth and the future of the city and its citizens. This is where the inclusiveness comes in. This is required by the guidelines, if we're to obtain this type of support from them, where we have elected officials, business leaders, community leaders, public at large, what have you. This council, in particular, would sit as the overall committee overseeing what's taking place with respect to that, again, from large to small, and from workforce to all other related issues. This is some long-term objectives you've tossed in here about workforce. It's very highly critical. It's necessary, obviously. It's our human capital. I think the key to it, though, is to continue for the city to develop new partnerships, new programs, continue working with veterans, non-college folks, the underemployed, and what have you, because frankly, talent is what drives companies, and companies will come to where talent's located. And I believe we have a fairly high concentration, but we need to continue working on it and into the next decade, if need be. These are some projects that we've done, I think, which are just quick examples. Next steps, if you want to go back to that, I can't anytime, of course, I'm just looking through.
EOS.
Sure. EOS is a company that's based over by the Coca-Cola plant, and they've developed a new surface that prevents staph infections. It's a copper-infused coating.
It's on that little side, true?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right.
Incredible company. I had a very close friend die from a staph infection. For me, this is very personal. They said it could stop.
They do solid surface countertops and things like that.
Well, they also do infused clothing as well, which is very fascinating.
And sheets.
And sheets, yes. It's amazing.
So, if you go into a hospital room, they can pretty much do the entire room or the ceiling.
And that's, yeah, the 70% is what they think they can get. So, that's a huge cost savings, as well as life-saving indicator. I think it's fascinating. Any more? These are next steps, just locally, and for us internally, we're doing new incentive programs, researching new potential zones, technology, foreign trade, tourism, and others. We are looking at opportunity to work on the workforce development strategies, as well as getting into the SEDS. That was it.
Steve, let me ask you just a couple of questions, and I know you've just been here. I don't intend to put you on the spot, I mean, you've only been here a matter of minutes, but the Economic Development Alliance, Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, are you attending those meetings?
Off and on, yes. Depends on timing, but yes.
Yeah. I mean, we support that. We have $200,000 to $300,000 annually. You know, if you look at the list of projects that have been created through that, or that they claim that they have helped initiate, I mean, I can't remember the last time one of them was in Norfolk. And I appreciate the fact that the economy, the regional economy is helped by developments in other cities. But, you know, I'd like you to take a look at that, if you will.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, maybe we ought to have, you ought to have some discussion with the guys who actually run the Alliance, you know, when they're in town, I mean, to figure out, you know, I mean, what they think about the prospects of bringing development to Norfolk.
Well, to be fair, they are really working hard, I think, in terms of trying to bring in development. We're in an interesting competitive position with respect to our other sister cities. Aside from having a lot of available land, they also have a fair amount of incentives that we don't really have or provide, including closing funds. And I think that sometimes dictates the outcome. It doesn't always do it, but yes.
We're about 97% developed, I understand that.
Yes.
But why don't you let us know what you think? I mean, how do we get in that game about if Virginia Beach has incentives they can offer that we don't bring to the table? We ought to at least, the council ought to at least know what that recipe is or what the cost is, because I keep looking. Monthly, I get those reports from the Economic Development Alliance, and, you know, I never see the name of Norfolk being mentioned. So, you know, they're supposed to be the, I mean, they go out of the area, they go to Europe, they go to Asia, they go all these other places. I keep waiting for something to pop up here. The Maritime Associate, I mean, I know you got, you just said you got rid of the clusters, or the sectors there. How do you, the Maritime Association had a big breakfast this morning, had a couple hundred people there. Were we represented at that?
I believe we were. I thought it was Alan.
Alan is typically the guy who relates to the Maritime Association.
Alan still continues. We still extend it to the sectors.
Yeah, I mean, my question is, how do you deal with?
Right.
And who's in charge of that?
Basically, we have a, it's a new, it's a new internal structure. Alan's running what's called BEAR, which is the business attraction, retention, expansion component, and that includes maritime. But given the nature of the lack of, well, we just don't have a lot of people, and there's a lot of sectors out there, it's no longer just the four or five, we have to be careful. So, I want to be sure we're focusing on, again, the most productive. Maritime is one of the most productive, defense, of course, but some of the other sectors really have meshed so much, they no longer really exist as separate entities. Like EOS technically is a manufacturing concern, but they were industrial, but reality, it's much more biomedical now than what it has been, which flips it again across the spectrum. But yes, we're represented.
Steve, let me ask you this. There's, when it comes to the synergy between your office, planning in particular, and the school board, what, and you may not have any type of discussions yet, but I think that you need to have, I know you have the two concierge positions. When it comes to dealing with planning and getting through the issues that planning brings to the table and those requirements, do you have, is the concierge position to be one where they're going to walk people through the planning process and then whatever else is needed? Can you give us some explanation?
Yes. Short answer is yes. That's what they're intended for.
Okay.
Not only that, also, too, but also to identify new networking opportunities, mentoring, and to hopefully identify problems they may be facing.
Are they going to, who will come? I know that, I can tell you that I've heard that going through planning is very difficult, and it's very time-consuming, and frankly, it almost, I hate to say it's offensive to have, I mean, God bless him, Rick does a business doing it, but we really shouldn't be in that position. We shouldn't have a business have to go hire somebody to help them get through our process. I don't want to take, you know, I hate to take food out of his mouth, but the bottom line is, we should not require, the puzzle here should not be so difficult that you need to hire somebody to get you through that process. So, will you, I don't know, have you sat down, or I guess you haven't at time, but that's something you're going to have to figure out with the planning group, when a new business comes in, what they have to go through to open a business, to make that an easier process?
Well, if I might. Since the creation of a new portfolio oversight of our group, as well as planning, including infrastructure, we've actually started that process.
All right, started. Start paring down what is not needed.
George has been incredible working with them. He's put together these new books, checklists, if you will, the capacity to move through the system a lot faster by clarifying the path.
Okay.
And that's really what the concierges are also intended to help with, is to, I mean, pathfinders, if you will, I guess.
All right. Now, the second area I've mentioned was the school system. You can't really have a real economic development without partnering with the school system. What is your plan in the future to make that interface with the school system, with curricula that would be needed in multiple sense, whether it's culinary arts, whether it's shipbuilding, whatever it is, to take those, to help the school system get to the next level? Have you all had a chance to make those discussions yet, or at least will you keep that on your horizon in the near future?
We've initiated some discussions.
Okay.
Not as detailed as I would like, but that's really.
You're just starting.
Yeah, it's on me. And as for the future, yes, we have to work closely with them. I know in other locations, in St. Louis, Lake County, we helped to create and establish STEM programs within the schools, cooperated with the major sectors of the economy at that time. And there, and Lake County was defense, and St. Louis County was a multiple variety of them. But I think the, it's highly important. You don't need to have a college degree to get a good job, but you need to have a good job to be able to shoot for.
Right.
And one of the things we did in both those locations is we established these oversight committees that was comprised of businesses and the major sectors to define what it is they needed and their talent pool. I think the school system's on the right path. I can't judge it because I'm not engaged in it, but I do know that the business world is concerned, and they do want to be involved. We've been asked on a couple of occasions.
Perhaps you need a, and I'm not going to tell you your business, but if there's a liaison that you have that would work with the school system to make, I think that would only, it would only show at least that there's an exchange of discussion, an exchange of information. And then you can take, because really, your job is to take those kids when they graduate to the next level, so that they're not forgotten, those that don't go to college, but those that are not forgotten. So, it really is something you need to, that needs to be a focus. I would believe it is. Lastly, in the area of Ward's Corner, the Workforce Development Center is located there.
Yes.
I know that the lease is running out on, for Kroger, Kroger there, excuse me, and of course, we know that they're opening the new store on the other side of the railroad tracks on the 19th. We have a lease that's in that area. I know that we have an option that I think kicks in in 2015, either purchase, whatever it may be. That is a prime piece of property there for the redevelopment of Ward's Corner. I know that the city has had a renewed focus in the last few years there, but I think that you need to go back, talk to your real estate people, I know Chuck's very familiar with it, see and begin the planning of what is our next step with regard to the Workforce Development Center at Ward's Corner, the grocery store that's next door, it's about, I think, that, and we have our option there. I think our lease is, has an option that kicks in in 2015, and begin to discuss perhaps with Barclay, Terry, myself, as to what the vision, and Mayor, who's been part of bringing all this around, as to what the vision is for that area, for that piece of property. I know Chuck has been working on it for years, but I think we're at a point now where that lease does have an option, and we need to decide if we're going to exercise it or not, and I don't want to forget it.
Sure.
Jerry, I know that's in your ward, but still, I think that really affects all of this. Yeah, so, if you could maybe sit down and look at that with the manager and Chuck and see where we're going. Thank you. That's all I have.
I just want, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to say is that I had mentioned around this table prior to you getting here, and it has to do with economic development, but it has more of a regional approach. One of the things that I believe is that this region, we should make this an educational destination. And I've said that in the past with William &amp; Mary, which also has a law school, Hampton University, Christopher Newport, the Newport News Apprentice School, Norfolk State, ODU, EVMS, Rejett, which also has a law school, Virginia Wesleyan, Tower of the Community College, and another. and another community college to it in Hampton. But if we had this region as an educational destination, that's something that, that we could build on. We woke up one morning and Ford Motor Company, you know, was gone.
Right.
Anheuser-Busch, if you look at their commercials, they say, well, we brew in 12 different, you know, areas. If Anheuser-Busch leaves, Smithfield Food leaves, we lost Union Camp. You know, there are companies that would, you know, have a great impact, but if this were an educational destination, if we looked at this as a region that people would send their children to go to school, we could also grow the workforce. We have the shipyards over there and they have skilled, semi-skilled as well as professional jobs. So now, I don't know how that would work as far as your department is concerned, but I believe that we need to have a discussion with you and the other economic development directors in this region to look at the possibility of making this a strong educational destination. You have Silicon Valley, you have the campuses up in Seattle from Microsoft and those, you know, companies. So we could do the same thing. And we have some strong universities here and they're getting even stronger. And I think we just need to look at those opportunities. And as I say, it's not Norfolk, Virginia Beach or Newport News, it's all of us. And I think we need to protect ourselves, you know, as a region. As I, as I mentioned, we lost Ford, we lost Union Camp. If we lose Anheuser-Busch, you know, we would be, you know, be in trouble. So that's just my.
All right. Thank you, Paul, Terry.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, but I would add to Mr. Riddick that biomedical and the medical campus is a huge driver in our community and that certainly is a source that we could grow. I wanted to thank you. I think many of you know, a year or two ago, we started a small business task force and sat down with small business owners in the area and we heard over and over again that what we needed were concierge to take people that were coming into the area and to walk them through this process. And Andy mentioned planning, but it's beyond planning. And I appreciate the fact that you've listened to us and started the concierge program, which we wanted to have both for existing businesses to retain them and also for the new businesses. But what's important is not that we just work with planning or that we work with development. What I heard over and over again from these business owners, talking to people that were trying to come into the area, is that every time they talked to somebody, they got a different answer. So it's not just planning. Everybody in our administration has to walk the same walk. And that's, you know, a culture change. And I hope, you know, I've seen some positive things here already, but I hope we continue that thrust because the competition is steep and we heard it over and over again of the frustration that people had that nobody could give them the same answer and they were spinning their wheels. I also, as you know, one of the other recommendations that we talked with Marcus and with you about was updating the website so that people, when they came to Norfolk, could punch a button and it would walk them right through. And so I noticed that we're getting better on it, but I, I hope you take that, because these folks were web designers and they were willing to do it for us. And not to take advantage of that is foolhardy, I think. And so that's something that we should encourage. These folks spent a lot of time and energy trying to help us and not to take advantage of that, I think, is doing us all a disservice. So I hope you will revisit that and we do anticipate getting back together with you again in a couple of months to chart your progress.
If I might on that point, we are in the process of developing a portal currently, and then after the portal will come a step towards the website, which we've discussed with.
Well, I hope that while you're doing that, you will call these people.
They're working with us.
Because we don't need to redo this. They're ready to do it.
Well, they're part of the project, actually.
Good, okay. Great, thanks.
They have far more talent than I do.
I know, that's what I'm saying. We don't have to do this, this is what they do for a living. Use it.
Yes, in this project, Norfolk 2030, I noticed in the listed, five points is listed in number two. They listed in the order of the completion of their development or they just listed the not alphabetical, so.
I believe.
It's just a random list, so five points is not number two on there.
It's pretty alphabetical, Frank. Pretty alphabetical.
F, O, C.
It's pretty alphabetical. That's the case. Look, N, O, R, S, T, W. I mean, it's pretty alphabetical if you look at.
And three.
It's fairly close.
Numbers first.
Fairly, fairly close.
I, you know, one of my main concerns is the Military Highway, Military Circle Corridor. And it seems as though every time I go to Janif, there's one less store there. Has anybody reached out to them to find out what is going on over there? Why are stores, I mean, we lost Old Navy, we lost Bare Feet Shoes, one of my favorite places, but, you know, we lost those and I know a couple of stores transitioned from military, that the linen store transitioned from military over and then there was another store that was in military that's actually on 21st Street now. But have we reached out to, because Janif was doing pretty well and it troubles me that, I know the mall is having some trouble, but now it seems as though Janif is having some trouble. Does anybody know what's going on?
We've set up internally a group and it's actually in staff recommendation. It's kind of like a study group of sorts, a workforce, not a workforce, a working group. That's addressing a lot of those issues right now. We've hired and retained a retail consultant, just looking at all the various issues. What we're told, and we attended a couple of conferences on the issue, is that it's mostly an impact to the economy. It's a desire for newer locations and lower pay rent, which is a hard combination to do. A couple of the stores, and I won't say which ones, it was their own issues that resulted in the loss. But around, we are on this, we're working on it. The problem with it, obviously, is we have multiple ownerships, except for Janif, of course, but anything that happens around it will impact Janif. And I think actually it's ran fairly well based on what I've seen, the mall itself, the Janif Mall.
One other thing, Andy, you brought this up when we were talking about the mall, the outlet mall and that strip of Military Highway from the POC down to what, Norview?
I had raised, I had raised Norview Avenue.
That's gateway.
Military Highway, Norview Avenue to Robin Hood Road.
Okay. We may need to look at that if we're gonna, you know, just going back off, piggybacking off of that, we're gonna have a nice shopping area there to maybe do something and maybe expanding those matching kinds of grants for aesthetic improvements for our businesses throughout the city that may want to improve their, the exterior of their business without, you know, they may not have all the money, but they may have half the money if we can, you know, do half the money, so.
Well, what we've looked at is the impact, obviously, the economic impact of the mall and the region, and we're trying to, trying to identify a way to funnel a lot of revenue stream back down. I think something that we have to keep in mind is the whole area is undergoing significant redevelopment right now. And I had had, or I should say staff by itself, volunteered, gone out there and met with individually different companies, the different retailers. That's kind of interesting feedback we've received, it's fairly positive.
Even some of the little mom and pop places.
It's been good. It's actually, nothing negative, put it that way, at least that I could record. I think the, I think the key, though, is you're right, we need to pay attention to our existing companies. We need to make certain they're taken care of and if that's a facade improvement grant or some type of fixing the stoplight in front of their, their office or their building. Absolutely. And then we're trying to track that and that's, that's part of the retention and expansion component piece, which is what I mentioned earlier, why it's so complex. There's so many different levels to it, but it's essential. You're absolutely right.
I want to piggyback a little bit on what Andy was saying with education. There is a huge gap with what our school system is training kids with, with what the industry right now is desiring. We have not changed it. We really need to have a focus on, in high schools and training them for ship, shipping industry. They're just, we're not producing the employment that they need in this area. And somebody's got to have that serious conversation with them. And I don't even think anymore that it's even at the high school level. When you look at workforce development, look, for example, Little Creek Elementary School, which is not an accredited school and just was there, all around Little Creek Elementary is a lot of retired military. And I think that if there's a way that we can open up our schools in the evening and you run an apprentice program out of those schools, you get a grant, you have elementary school teachers, middle school teachers and high school teachers that need extra money that will come over there and teach math if they need it, even if it's elementary school math to help those guys get through if that's what they need, if it's not military. And you start building a community that way and you get those guys jobs, and women, you get them jobs by building those programs in those communities. They can walk to that school, get the help they need, they go home at night, and then if they have children in the school, then you start passing that down to those children. They're teaching them math or they're, they're right there next to them teaching math. But we've got to open up our schools at night, not all of them. We can't, can't afford to do that. Most of them are open because the custodial staff is in there cleaning it, so the lights are on. It's not, you're not paying extra money for energy, but let's look for those types of opportunities, particularly in these areas where we have high poverty. And I know you poverty commission, I don't know how much you guys have addressed that, but look at those poverty tracks and, you know, look at East Ocean View where there is a high poverty track that goes to Little Creek and bring some of those families into that school at night and start teaching them and training them. We're not being innovative. We're just missing that and I think we're missing it at the schools with training our kids. I think there's probably more kids signed up on doing hairdressing than there is on welding. Why? Why? Do we really have the need for that many hairdressers? I know there's kids that have that passion, but why aren't we pushing kids into welding? I mean, that's, yeah, you don't have to worry about that. Why are we pushing them into the shipping industry? And if the cruise industry is now going to rebound and grow, where's the recreational side and what are we teaching kids in that industry and to get involved with cruise? We've got to have those programs now and nobody is having those conversations with the school system. I think they know, but I think they need that serious advice, you know, from us and bringing those players to the table and telling the school system, this is what we need.
See, Tommy, I think that's totally what we're talking about with the CTE program and to, to get, and that's what we're talking about with employers. Remember, news is dying to put money into training our kids.
Yeah, Huntington Eagles is.
That's why, you know, I keep telling people, I think this career and technical is what we need developmentally.
And I agree with you, but the problem is, is we can't wait right now for the building to be built.
But just teaching math schools at an elementary school, you know, they're going to need more than that.
No, I'm saying, put an apprentice program at that elementary school. It's a building, it's got classes, classroom technology and bring them in and then you can move it to another elementary school and another, just moving around.
You know, we've gotten more sophisticated than that.
I'm not talking about kids, I'm talking about adults.
But the other thing too is you can partner with the, with TCC. TCC did a program on women in welding and they talked to women about the benefits of going into welding and the amount of money that they could make and some of them make more money than doctors. And so it's, it's just a matter of partnering with them on the economic development side and using those resources. And I agree with you in thinking out of the box and using what we have until we can get what we want.
I can feel Kim behind me, ready to jump out of her seat. She's ready.
Say, come on, guys. Andy, we're gonna have to move along.
Real quick, just following what Paul said, I had, I was watching a Texas A&amp;M football game this past, in fall. And, and, big Johnny, big Johnny football fan. Regardless, when I was watching the game, there was a discussion that occurred about a corporation was moving its corporate headquarters to, I guess, College Station because of A&amp;M. And it wasn't, and when he was asked, it was interesting, when they asked the corporate head, why are you moving this headquarters, you know, it's from New Jersey? Why are you moving it there? He said, because I'm getting the incentives from the state, from Governor Perry. And they sassed him, what incentives are they giving you? He says, well, nothing's really solid yet, but we know that Texas A&amp;M is here and we need so many skilled employees that, from their particular programs. And we know that we're going to have this workforce that can come out of there. So my next step is, following up with what Paul said, you've got Wesleyan, Norfolk State, ODU, you've got tens of thousands of college students in a city that's only a quarter million. And then you throw in the med school and TCC. You have one of the most educated workforces per square mile that you're going to find anywhere. That being said, perhaps our next step is to get these universities and use those as our draw. I mean, considering the fact that a majority of them are public and then even the private ones receive funds, I mean, from the city, much less the state. So perhaps your next step is look to Richmond. And I don't know what contact you've had with Richmond, Steve, in the last, since you've been here, but you need to look to Richmond and their economic development for the state and then using those universities as the economic draw. Because if you can bring in the educated workforce that it, that it has, what our public school system is doing on its turnaround, which it is, and I, and I believe and trust it is, then I think that we can use that as our educated workforce and, and arguing that per square mile, where are you going to find it?
That's part of the, it really is. And what we've been doing is identifying those companies. We haven't made the trips yet.
Right.
To qualify that. That would benefit from this workforce.
And tell them they can golf nine months, ten months. But I mean, that does, but you did say that comes into play in corporate relocation. So that being said, I really think that that may be the next step. And I don't know how you divide your office up, that may be a place to go.
Sure.
Sorry, Paul, thanks. But I know Mr. Riddick's been saying that for the three and a half years I've been here.
Okay. Well, thank you for the discussion and thank you for coming and thank you for what you're doing. We appreciate your, your effort. Jerry, thank you. We'll, sorry, we won't see you. Thanks for what you've done. Okay, we're gonna go eat, okay? So thank you, please.
Go ahead.
We're gonna eat dinner. We're gonna eat dinner while we're in closed session, okay?
Just gotta get you, I mean, make sense, but what's. Jim, did you get that last text just now?